Good evening and welcome. Before tonight's board meeting, Mr. Sam Semino, an incoming senior at Hanville High School, will lead us in a moment of reflection. Before Sam delivers the moment of reflection, I'd just like to give you a little bit of background on Sam. Sam is a, will be a four-year member of the Hanville High School football team and baseball team. He has maintained a 4.2 grade point average while enrolled in advanced placement in honors coursework. He is active in both Beta and the National Honor Society. Sam volunteers in his community at Holy Family Catholic Church in the Knights of Columbus. He is active in the Growing with a Tiger football mentoring program that provides one-on-one mentoring to primary-age students in St. Charles Parish. He most recently attended the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Seminar with the goal of participating, leadership training, service learning, and other valuable cultural experiences. After the moment of reflection, Board Member Mr. Art O'Quinn will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Dear Lord, we first want to ask you to keep us safe during this hurricane season. We come to you today asking for your guidance and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage and allow us to grow closer as a group and a community. Lastly, we come to you asking for your help in having a successful school year for all students and teachers. In Jesus's name we pray.
Praise the Lord. To the United States of America and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation without a doubt indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Sam. And it goes without saying that the first three years of your high school career has been quite a challenge, and we truly hope and pray that your fourth, your senior year is a normal one. And we hope that for your classmates at Hanville, as well as the seniors at Destrehan High as well. Thanks again for delivering the moment of reflection. This meeting of the Board for St. Charles Parish Public Schools for Wednesday, July 20th, is called to order. For the record, we have all eight board members in attendance. Also in attendance is our superintendent, Dr. Ken Ortling, and Mrs. Shelley Babino, the executive secretary for the Board and superintendent. Item 2.01, Resolution in Memory of Deceased Student. Mr. Robichaud, would you present that resolution, please?
It'd be my honor. Resolution to accept, excuse me, to accept the resolution in memory of Javen Shortz. Javen Shortz was a ninth-grade student at Destrehan High School during the 2020-21 school year. Now be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board hereand express to the family of the late Javen Shortz its sincere sympathy in this, their time of sorrow. And be it further resolved that a page in the July 20, 2022 Board Meeting Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Shortz family. May I move approval?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, second, and by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes, and the Shortz family is not in attendance this evening, so we will make sure that the resolution is sent to them. Item 3.01, Board and Superintendent's Recognition. Hanville High School employee is one of 15 teachers in the nation to be selected as an Albert Einstein Distinguished Education Fellow. He is the first from Louisiana and will spend the next year working on Capitol Hill, Mr. Tyler Dufresne. Congratulations, Tyler. Just as an aside, Mr. Dufresne is a board member with the LaFouche Parish Public Schools. And unfortunately, because he's moving, he'll be, he'll be resigned in his position as a board member there. And, you know, so that gives you an indication of the kind of commitment he's making to his, to his craft, the teaching profession. So we applaud you for that. So. And when you, upon your return, we look forward to receiving a report about your experience in Capitol, at Capitol Hill, so. We're now moving to our business items, beginning with item 4.01, Minutes, June 13, 2022 Committee Meetings, and June 15, 2022 Regular Board Meeting.
Move approval?
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, second, and by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.02, Approval of Liability Insurance Brokerage. The Risk Management Department solicits brokers on a three-year cycle. We are in year three of three. Requests for qualifications were requested from several brokers through advertisements. The district received three responses to the requests for qualifications. The Risk Management and Insurance Committee reviewed and evaluated statements of qualifications based upon the criteria set forth in the requests for qualifications, and received oral presentations. The selection of Alliant Insurance Services Incorporated provides the district with high-quality services. This item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on July 18, 2022, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move that we approve the selection of Alliant Insurance Services Incorporated as the district's liability insurance brokerage.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, second, and by Mr. Robichaud. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.03, Approval of Flood Insurance Brokerage. Requests for qualifications were requested from several brokers through advertisements. The district received two responses to the requests for qualifications. The Risk Management and Insurance Committee reviewed and evaluated statements of qualifications based upon the criteria set forth in the requests for qualifications, and received oral presentations. The selection of Riverlands Insurance Services Incorporated provides the district with high-quality services. This item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on July 18, 2022, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move we approve the selection of Riverlands Insurance Services Incorporated as the district's flood insurance brokerage.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, who's the chair of the Risk Management and Insurance Committee, and seconded by Mr. Robichaud, who's also a member of that committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. That motion passes. The next item is item 4.04, Purchase of Student Accident and Catastrophic Insurance. The school board has purchased student accident insurance for all students and athletic participants for the past 12 years. Cost of the program is driven by claims experience. The Director of Risk Management and Benefits has received renewal rates from Risk Services of Louisiana Incorporated. The renewal of the plan has a 0% increase. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on July 18, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move we approve the purchase of student accident and catastrophic insurance with Emeritus Life Insurance Corporation and Great American Insurance Company from Risk Services Louisiana at a cost of $103,391.53.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, second, and by Mr. Robichaud. Any discussion?
I'd like to point out, I know last year was exactly the same, but two years ago, we were at about 4,000 more. So we're actually taking a decrease from two years ago. And I know COVID had a lot to do with it. With our kids in the school, we don't have many claims, but they still play football. And that's where most of the claims came from. So we must be doing something right on the health care of our athletes. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Robichaud. Any other discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. The next item is item 4.05, Purchase of Excess Workers' Compensation Insurance. The district's coverage for excess workers' compensation insurance with Midwest Employers' Casualty by Specialty Captive Group expires on July 31, 2022. The current plan has a self-insured retention of $750,000 per claim. The Director of Risk Management and Benefits has received four options for excess workers' compensation insurance. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on July 18, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Move approval of the purchase of excess workers' compensation insurance from Midwest Employers Casualty? A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, second, and by Mr. O'Quinn. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.06, Purchase of Faithful Performance Bonds. The purchase of faithful performance bonds is a good business practice and protects the school board's assets. The school board purchases various bonds covering the school board and all employees. These are issued as three separate bonds, which will expire on July 31, 2022. The Director of Risk Management and Benefits has received quotes from CNA Weston Surety for the faithful performance bonds for the superintendent and the tax collector, and from Travelers for the employee dishonesty bond from Louisiana Insurance Service. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 18, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move we approve the purchase of faithful performance bonds for the superintendent and the tax collector from CNA Weston Surety, as well as the employee dishonesty bond from Travelers.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Quinn, second, and by Mr. Robichaud. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Now motion passes.
Mr. President, I guess personal privilege now that you've voted and cast already, but I just wanted to point out the premiums. We're in state in the first page. The annual premium for one of the bonds, for the faithful performance bonds, $9,669, and the other bond is $8,175 annually.
Thank you, Mr. Robichaud. Item 4.07, Industrial Tax Exemption Application, Bungie North America Incorporated. Effective July 1, 2018, Governor Edwards directed that changes be made to the industrial tax exemption program, which alters the conditions under which a manufacturing company may be granted an ad valorem tax exemption, and allows local governing bodies to be involved in the approval process. Each local governing body may approve the exemption of 80% of its share of the ad valorem taxes over a 10-year period. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 18, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the industrial tax exemption application.
A second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Mr. Savoie, second, and by Mr. Nakane. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to just point out that, that we're approving an ITAP application of a project that could possibly happen in the future. It's not, it's not a definite project, and it's not something that's existing already. This is to have economic development inside of our parish and create lots of jobs and bring lots of tax dollars to our parish. So I just wanted to point that out, that it's not something existing. It is an increase.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask Superintendent if he would point out the features of the application that beneficial, most beneficial to the parish.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Mr. Robichaud. Dr. Ortling?
Sure, I can certainly make note of the total, you know, if this ITAP were approved and the, the changes made to that site or renovations made over 10-year periods, predict to be approximately $10 million tax value to, to the taxpayers or to the tax collectors. As far as the facilities themselves, is a manufacturing facility, part of it is to expand the barge. I believe we do have representatives from, from Bungie here as well, but to expand the barge operation to add additional offloading site of the barge itself, as well as the actual manufacturing of the, the oils in the, on the backside of the property. But certainly, we do have a few representatives from Bungie here, if any would like to, if the board is okay to come forward and, and provide any additional information. And also didn't mention the, the sales tax dollars that the parish would also receive based on the expansion of the projects. I would certainly like to invite any representative from Bungie to step forward to the mic and, and introduce themselves and anything else that they would like to add about the project. And Mr. Foshe, Economic Development is here as well in the audience, if you'd like to address. Mr. Mike?
Thank you, guys, for, for having us and taking this up and considering our application. Just a little bit about the project. We're looking to expand, there's three facets we're looking to expand. One is the oil seam processing side of our facility. As, as was mentioned, most of your job in Bungie is the grain facility, which is the front half of the property. This is associated with the back half, the oil seam processing plant, looking to expand that. Along with that expansion, the second phase, if you will, the second part, is adding additional barge loading capacity to feed the expansion. And then the potential for a refinery, when you think of refinery, it's a veg oil refinery, if you will, not a, not like an oil refinery that you can go with a bunch of columns, et cetera, like you see in Norco. It's very simple process to refine veg oil, and some of that could be refined to a process, potentially food grade, but mainly probably focused on the renewable diesel market. So the refining process won't get that far down.
I'd like to thank Bungie personally for, for keeping St. Charles Parish in consideration for these projects. The competitive nature nationwide of these projects, and everybody in Corey for doing a great job working with y'all, fighting for these projects and y'all to not just stay here, but to grow and to keep your dollar seeing in St. Charles Parish. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. We've been a long-term resident of the parish, and we, we enjoy it. It's good for us and hopefully for you guys as well.
Would you just point out the number of local employees that Bungie employs?
Right now, we have roughly 145 employees at our site, and 55%, I think the number of the 79 are from the parish. The rest come from surrounding areas.
Any further discussion or questions?
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hearing none, please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.08, Resolution to Approve the Millage Rates for the Tax Year 2022. Louisiana revised statute, Section 47, Paragraph 1705A, requires an agency with taxing authority to furnish the assessor and legislative auditor with the tax rate to be applied to the assessed property values each year. The St. Charles Parish School Board, as a taxing body, must take official action to approve the levy of property tax rates. Favorable board action on a resolution is necessary for the millages to be levied and taxes collected. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 18, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we reduce the school operations and maintenance millage from 42.06 mills to 41.06 mills and adopt the resolution to approve the millage rate for tax year 2022. Estimated revenues are school construction tax, $7,200,000; school operations and maintenance tax, $73,900; school construction improvement, $7,800,000; and school bonds, $9 million.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakane, second, and by Mr. Savoie. Any discussion? I would just like to mention that while we're reducing this millage rate, the other three millages will remain the same, and those are the school constitutional tax, 4.04; the school construction and improvement, 4.35; and the school bonds, 5.01. Any other discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.09, Requests for Proposals: Emergency Project Management. The district wishes to have available qualified firms to provide project management and grant management consultation related to potential future natural disasters or other emergencies. In order to determine the most qualified firms to provide these services, it would be prudent for the district to issue a request for proposals from firms for the procurement of these services. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 18, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the Request for Proposals for Emergency Project Management.
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoie, second, and by Mr. Nakane. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.10, Resolution on Oversight Authorization of School Board Bank Accounts. Personnel changes at schools and centers dictate changing authorization on checking accounts. Additionally, circumstances may require bank accounts to be opened or closed. Banking institutions require approval from an authorized school board representative to allow for these changes. Therefore, the school board presents a resolution authorizing the chief financial officer to approve, on behalf of the board, changes to authorize signers for the school board, schools, and centers, as well as the opening or closing of accounts. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 18, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the resolution authorizing CFO to approve authorized signers for the school board, schools, and centers, and to open or close accounts.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakane, second, and by Mr. Savoie. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.11, Interim Fiscal Year 2023 Budget. State law requires the approval of a budget for the district's general fund and special, special revenue funds. A public hearing was held earlier this evening in compliance with statutory provisions. The proposed budget for fiscal year 2023 represents a budget that allocates approximately 73% of general fund expenditures in the area of instruction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 18, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the interim budget fiscal year 2023. General funds, $168,394,800. Special revenue funds, $31,985,276. Debt service funds is $8,989,18. Our capital project funds are $26,115,000, and our lunch line is $6,520,600.
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoie, second, and by Mr. Nakane. Any discussion on our interim budget? I understand our chief financial officer is going to provide some commentary on the interim budget. Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, and good evening. I have a short PowerPoint for you. The interim budget for the year ending June 30, 2023 is being presented this evening to the board for its approval. The budget was discussed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting last month. Few things I would like to point out in the budget and a brief summary of the budget. Under the general fund for revenues, for ad valorem taxes, the budget shows $81.1 million, which is an increase of $6.8 million, and this is due to an increase in the total assessed. is due to an increase in the total assessed property value for the parish. Sales taxes are showing a budget of sixty-two million dollars, which is a decrease of one point eight million dollars from this past year, and this is due to a conservative estimate that the sales tax revenue will begin to go down following Hurricane Ida. State funding is showing twenty-nine point four million dollars of revenue, which is an increase of approximately two point six million dollars, and this increase is due to the state increasing its funding for pay raises that the state is funding. Total revenues are a hundred and seventy-three point six million dollars, which is an overall increase of eight point nine million dollars. For general fund expenditures, the total expenditures and transfers to other funds is a hundred and seventy-two point four million dollars, which is an increase of nineteen point five million dollars. Most of this is due to an increase in salaries and benefits, including ten point two million dollars, which is due to district-funded pay raises, increase of two point six million dollars, which is due to state-funded pay raises, an increase of one point nine million dollars due to one-time recruitment and retention payments, and an increase of two point six million dollars, which is due to an increase in the cost of health benefits. For the year, the general fund is budgeted to show a surplus of one point two million dollars. For the special revenue funds, the Hurricane Ida Recovery Fund, conservatively is showing no revenues to be budgeted, although we expect by the time the recovery process is over that we will have recovered virtually all of the expenses, the expenditures that we have spent on the recovery. However, I would like to say we've received two million dollars just this year since the budget was prepared. For expenditures, we are budgeting eighteen point zero million dollars for the ongoing recovery. Other special revenue funds are showing revenues of fourteen point million dollars, excuse me, fourteen point zero million dollars, which includes five million dollars of ESSER funding, and expenditures as well, fourteen point zero million dollars, including five million dollars for ESSER funding, excuse me, ESSER expenditures. And for other funds, we're showing debt service funds, revenues of about ten point one million dollars and nine point zero million dollars of expenditures. Capital projects funds, twenty-six point eight million dollars of revenues and other funding sources, which is including a budgeted proceeds of our new bond issue of fifteen million dollars, and it's showing twenty-six point one million dollars of expenditures. And the lunch fund is showing a little under six million dollars of revenue and a little over six million dollars of expenditures. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. White or, or the superintendent? Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item four point one two, accounts payable for the month of June twenty twenty-two. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and is aligned with goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of June twenty twenty-two, a total amount of six million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, seconded by Mr. Savoie. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item four point one three, requests for proposals, debris monitoring services. The district's hurricane disaster preparedness and recovery plan includes a recommendation by FEMA to request proposals for emergency services. These services will assist the district in expediting recovery from a disaster. The required documents to request proposals for emergency debris monitoring services have been completed. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the request for proposals for emergency debris monitoring services.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, who's the Chair of the Capital Improvements Committee, and seconded by Mr. O'Quinn. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. And that motion passes. Item four point one four, requests for proposals, environmental services. The district's hurricane disaster preparedness and recovery plan includes a recommendation by FEMA to request proposals for emergency services. These services will assist the district in expediting recovery from a disaster. The required documents to request proposals for environmental services have been completed. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the request for proposals for environmental services.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion on this item? Please cash your vote. And that motion passes. The next item is item four point one five, change order number three, Deshran High School gym renovation and addition. The contract modifications in change, change order number three include a contract extension of a hundred and sixty days due to weather delays, COVID-nineteen material delays, and Hurricane Ida work suspension days. In addition, thirty-five days of liquidated damages are being assessed to remedy losses sustained by the district due to additional delays in completion of the project. The total credit for all changes is fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. The architect recommends acceptance. Acceptance of this change order will allow the district to make the necessary modifications to the existing contract. This item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the change order number three for Deshran High School gym renovation and addition. As you stated earlier, this change order allows for a credit of fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Nakian. We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item four point one six, substantial completion, Deshran High School gym renovation and addition. The renovations at the Deshran High School gym renovation and addition have been completed. The project is ready to be accepted as substantially complete. The final inspection was held on Tuesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, with punch list items remaining. Acceptance of the renovations as substantially complete will allow the contractor to process all closeout documents. The architect recommends acceptance. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the Deshran High School gym renovation and addition as substantially complete.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, seconded by Mr. Alexander, who's also a member of the Capital Improvements Committee. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Superintendent, where, where do we fall budget-wise on both Deshran and Hawnville? I mean, I guess you could wait for the Hawnville, but when Hawnville gets here, but I believe we're on track. I'll ask Mr. Rome, uh, our chief, uh, physical plant service schedule, I'll just come up and give a report in there, please. Sir Rome?
Yes, good evening. I expected that question, Mr. Rome, as you.
You know, always ask.
Do put me on the spot with that, but I appreciate it. Uh, yeah, I'm happy to report both projects kind of fell in the four point five million dollar range at a bid time. Uh, we have had some change orders on both pluses and minuses, uh, very inconsequential for projects and renovations of this nature in the four point five million range. Plus, on the renovation side, where you have a lot of unknowns, um, we pretty much stayed directly on budget, and, uh, you've seen the credit for Deshran High tonight in the amount of fifty-two thousand dollars. So, uh, we, we stayed on track.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rome. Any further discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item four point one seven, ratification of change order number four, Hanville High School gym renovation and addition. Several contract modifications included in change order number four resulted in a credit of not, of five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. The additions amounted to fourteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. The credits amounted to twenty thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars, which brought us to the net credit of five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. The contract was extended by a hundred and seventy-nine calendar days due to weather delays, COVID-nineteen material delays, and Hurricane Ida damage delays. The architect recommends acceptance. To prevent further delay of the project, authorization was given to the contractor to proceed with the work after getting approval from the Board President, Vice President, and Capital Improvements Chairperson. Approval of this change order will allow the district to make the, to make the necessary modifications to the existing contract. This item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the ratification of change order number four for the Hawnville High School gym renovation and addition.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion on this item? Please cash your vote. And that motion passes. Item four point one eight is substantial completion for the Hanville High School gym renovation and addition.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the Hawnville High School gym renovation and addition as substantially complete.
Thank you, Mr. Nakian and Mr. Alexander, uh, for the motion and the second. Any discussion on this item? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item four point one nine, safe schools update, requests for additional resource officers. In order to enhance the district's safety and security program, administration recommends adding two resource officers for elementary schools and one additional resource officer for secondary schools. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I am happy to make a motion to approve the request to add two resource officers for the elementary schools and one additional resource officer for the secondary schools, approximate cost of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Nakian. Uh, I know this is one of your, um, pet, pet items, so I know you're glad to see this coming to Board table. We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, seconded by, uh, Mr. Alexander. Any discussion?
Just want to point out, uh, Mr. President, that, uh, safety and security in our schools is a top priority of the St. Charles Parish Public School System. And, uh, in addition to placing these offices, additional offices in schools, uh, the district also conducted a safety drill, um, and that, uh, as my understanding went very well and, uh, served to prepare, uh, staff for any emergencies that might arise. Uh, we want to commend the superintendent and the Safety and Security Department for the work that they are doing to keep our children safe in our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate those comments. I understand we did get some media coverage too, I think, from a couple of local TV stations on that drill. Any further discussion?
Uh, I'd also like to rec, uh, to at least acknowledge Lieutenant Lenny Brown, who's here representing the resource officers, uh, for the Sheriff's Department, and truly appreciate their close collaboration in all aspects of our, uh, safety and security plan as a school system. Thank you, Lieutenant Brown.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item four point two zero, physical plant services, project manager position. Due to the impacts of Hurricane Ida, the district is currently in the construction fa, phase of six major bid projects, with two more requiring design and construction. Additionally, with the passage of the twenty twenty-two bond issue, the district is set to embark on the design and construction of thirty-five million dollars in capital projects. The need for project management assistance is imminent and necessary with this additional project load for the Department of Physical Plant Services. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and is aligned with goals B and D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the physical plant services project management position for a salary range of eighty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars to one hundred and one thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars. That includes salary and benefits.
Motion by Mr. Savoie? Seconded by Mr. O'Quinn. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. And that motion passes. Item four point two one, school safety, security, and emergency preparedness assessment. In order to enhance the district's safety and security program, administration recommends approving Safe Havens International to perform an off-site review of district documents related to safety, security, and emergency preparedness. Additionally, site-level assessments of all St. Charles Parish public school systems, schools and educational facilities will be conducted. This includes nine elementary schools, four middle schools. This includes nine elementary schools, four middle schools, two high schools, and five other educational facilities. Assessment reports will be utilized to guide long-range strategic action plans relative to safety, security, and emergency preparedness. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capitol Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 18th, 2022, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Safe Havens International to perform a safety, security, and emergency preparedness assessment to all of our 20 facilities.
Second.
And the cost is $109,980.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion on this item?
I would just like to thank fellow board members for stepping up. I apologize. I'd like to thank fellow board members for stepping up and approving full coverage throughout the whole district, and not just choosing, you know, just certain schools. I think it's important that Safe Havens is an eyeball on every facility. Every facility that we have is unique, and it's going to benefit the school itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nakhan. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 4.22, The Dr. Rodney Orlefon Performing Arts Center Restructuring Plan. As part of the Dr. Rodney Orlefon Performing Arts Center Restructuring Plan, modifications are required to meet the current needs of the facility due to increased use and continued growth. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 18th, 2022, and is aligned with goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the Dr. Rodney Orlefon Performing Arts Center Restructuring Plan as attached.
Second.
For a cost of $151,700.
Second.
I mean, J. Robichaux.
We have a motion by Mr. Savwa, who's the chair of the Personnel and Policy Committee, and seconded by Mr. Robichaux. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. President, I'd just like to point out that another one of the major priorities of the school district is the Rodney Orlefon Performing Arts Center. When we selected Dr. Orling as our superintendent, one of the marching orders that we gave to the superintendent was to make the Performing Arts Center a self-sustained operation. At the beginning of that operation, we found ourselves in a position where we had to subsidize a considerable amount of its operation, and that's a difficult task. It's an extremely difficult task that we gave the superintendent because one of the things that the Performing Arts Center was put in the operations for is to provide for our students and not to provide for outside operations and performances and so forth. So, you're looking at a situation where revenue to be gained is difficult to come if you're not giving a major part of the operation to entities which could purchase space and so forth. The last report that we received at our Monday night's meeting indicates that the Performing Arts Center is now self-sustaining, and there are plans going forward that would increase the solvency of that operation. I just want to commend the superintendent and ask the board to approve this restructuring plan.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for those comments. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to respond. Thank you, Mr. Smith, but certainly it's worked a lot of people in support of the board, obviously, in direction that you gave the superintendent, as well as staff at the Performing Arts Center, including the director, exec director, faculty student support, and our LPAC advisory board. So, there are a lot of tough financial decisions to make with the support from the board, so certainly that is much appreciated and ecstatic to see its growth over the last few years. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Orling. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 4.23, The Dr. Rodney Orlefon Performing Arts Center Job Description Additions and Revisions. The superintendent is responsible for recommending job description additions and revisions to the board. Job descriptions are being recommended to meet the current needs of the Dr. Rodney Orlefon Performing Arts Center. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 18th, 2022, and is aligned with goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the job description additions and revisions of the Dr. Rodney Orlefon Performing Arts Center.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Savwa, seconded by Mr. Okuan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 4.24, Revisions to Policy 5.74, Purchasing and Bidding, First Reading. Based on feedback from the district's attorneys and a review of Policy and Procedure 5.74, Purchasing and Bidding, it was determined that certain revisions were required. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 18th, 2022, and is aligned with goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the revisions of Policy 5.74, Purchasing and Bidding, for its first reading at no cost to the school system.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Savwa, seconded by Mr. Okuan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 4.25, Revisions to Policy 4.23, Evaluation of Staff Members, Second Reading and Adoption.
I move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Okuan, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 4.26, Proposal Acceptance: Substitute Management Services. A request for proposals was issued by the district to obtain a qualified firm to provide substitute management services. Proposals were received from four firms. The evaluation committee recommends entering into a one-year contractual agreement with ESS to provide substitute management services for the district. Once effectiveness is determined, the Human Resources Department will make a recommendation to continue or discontinue services. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 18th, 2022, and is aligned with goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move we approve the selection of ESS to provide substitute staffing management for the district at a projected annual additional cost of $539,454.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Okuan, and seconded by Mr. Savwa. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to call up Mr. Teresa Webb for clarification, because my understanding that we were able to negotiate a three-year contract on this item, and the glitch was was the exiting clause. Okay, so without...
That is correct. As you were aware, I sent you guys an email, we just did not update this agenda item to reflect that we are able to enter into a three-year contract with a termination clause of 60 days' notice, and we did get that in writing from the vendor, and we will look at that contract, too.
Yeah, the three-year contract allowed us to a better rate than a single one-year contract, so we were able to do that, and like I said, you know, the concern was, you know, we're going to be locked into a three-year contract, but the company, ESS, is going to allow us to maintain that 60-day termination time period.
And what that three-year contract does is locks us in for three years with no rate increases.
Thank you. Do we need to state that in the motion?
I think we do.
So, whoever made the motion?
I think we have a substitute motion.
So, I'd like to make a move that we approve the selection of ESS to provide substitute staffing and management to the district, and for a three-year contract with the clause of a 60-day notice if we ever want to get out of it.
We have that amended motion from Mr. Okuan. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Mr. Nakhan, second. Any further discussion on this item? Please cast your vote. Item 4.27, Personnel Items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 18th, 2022, and is aligned with goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Savwa, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to recognize our newly appointed administrators in the audience. I want to apologize, first of all, that person level so further down the list, but certainly you see how this board operates and guides our district. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Tereshia Chapman, Assistant Principal at Mimosa Park Elementary. Please stand and be recognized. Ms. Jessica Gardier, Assistant Director of Head Start and Four-Year-Old Programs. And Mr. Mike Sealy, Administrative Monitor at the Satellite Center. Thank you all for joining us, and thank you, principals and Head Start Director, for joining us as well.
Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 4.28, 2022/2023 Student Code of Conduct District Handbook. As mandated by Louisiana Revised Statute, Section 17, Paragraph 416.8, an annual review of the St. Charles Parish Public Schools Student Code of Conduct District Handbook was conducted by the Discipline Committee on May 31st, 2022. Recommendations for revisions to the handbook were made by the committee in compliance with board policy. This agenda item was reviewed at the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 18th, 2022, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I'm of acceptance of the revisions of the St. Charles Parish Public Schools 2022/23 Student Code of Conduct District Handbook.
Second. We have a motion by Mrs. Bernard, who's the chair of the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee, and seconded by Mr. Savwa, who's also a member of that committee. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. President, I'd like to bring up Ms. Jerry Smith, Executive Director of Student Services, to give a short overview of the code of conduct.
I was going to thank her for all her hard work, and she was sitting there, you know.
So, good evening, board members and Superintendent Orland, and thank you. The District Discipline Committee did meet on May 31st and made recommendations for changes to the document to our board. There are just a couple of changes that are noteworthy for parents tonight. First of all, the counseling component for the violence prevention program is being modified, so parents are asked to please review the Violence Prevention Program section with their children. Next, unfortunately, vaping has rapidly become the preferred choice of tobacco use among our youth. Our board members and our superintendent are extremely concerned about the adverse impact that vaping is having on our students. As a result of that, and as a proactive response, we will be implementing a vaping deterrent plan, and parents are asked to please, please review the Vaping and Electronic Devices section in the handbook and review it with their students. Finally, handbooks will be reviewed during the first week of school and classrooms. It will be coming home in the inbox and will also be available on the website, and parents are just encouraged to please review the entire document with their students, and that was all that we had. Thank you so much for your tremendous work in getting this handbook to be published.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any further discussion on this item? Please cast your vote. Item 4.29, Requests for Qualifications Lobbying Services. Legislative actions directly impact operations of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. In order to assist the school system with legislative affairs, the St. Charles Parish School Board is seeking qualifications from registered lobbyists to provide lobbying services. This item was reviewed at the Legislative Committee meeting of the Board on July 18th, 2022, and is aligned with goal E of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Okuan, seconded by Mr. Smith, who is the chair of the Legislative Committee. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. President, I'd just like to point out that legislative involvement in the day-to-day operation of schools is becoming more and more prevalent. In addition to the legislature wanting to become involved in the day-to-day operation of schools, the legislature is also imposing unfunded mandates on schools which affect the budgeting of school districts. In addition to budget issues, there are many operational issues that the legislature is requiring, and we believe that the primary function of education rests at the local school districts. We have depended traditionally on lobbying services that were provided by the Louisiana School Boards Association to bring to the legislature those issues that directly affect public schools in the state, and to bring school boards' concerns about issues that were pending before the legislature, and to present our side of those issues. The Louisiana School Boards Association oftentimes have to advocate on behalf of all of the districts in the state, and that advocacy may not be in the best interest of St. Charles Parish Public Schools in particular, because there are differences between financials and all other kinds of issues as it relates to public education among school districts across the state. We believe at this time that it is in our interest to, because of the increased legislative influence on education, that we take a more active control of our own destiny as it relates to our... to working with the legislature and working with our elected legislators. So we believe that to do that is necessary for this board to look at hiring lobbyists during the legislative session to keep us abreast of all of the activities of the legislature and particularly those issues that directly impact us. We have traditionally relied on our staff to do that, and our staff is overwhelmed because their primary responsibility is the education of our children in the district, and they're not able to keep up with the magnitude of bills that are brought before the legislature and getting that information to us and getting a review of that to determine the impact of those bills on our particular legislative process. So I'm going to ask the board to approve this item because we've talked about this, we'll talk about it again Monday night at our board meeting, and I'll ask you to approve this item.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anybody else like to comment on this? Further discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes, and that brings us to the end of the business items, twenty-nine to be exact. That takes us into closing items, beginning with item five point zero one, standing committee reports. Chair of any standing committee may present a report at this time.
Mr. President, capital improvements met Monday, a slew of items. Majority of the items were brought to the board table tonight. Those are going to include the request for proposal, the Freedom Monitoring Services, request for proposal, environmental service, change order number three at the Destiny High School gym, substantial completion at Destiny High School gym, ratification of change order number four at Hornville Gym, substantial completion at the Hornville Gym, Safe Schools Update for Additional Resource Officers. Thanks, Board. Let's see, Architectural Engineering Selection, website. Mr. Rome gave us a long-range layout of projects that are on the board and with engineering and architect assignments for those projects. So all of those are in order, and I'm sure Mr. Rome is eager to get that work out to these individuals so we can start the ball rolling. The other one was Physical Plant Temporary Project Manager Position was approved tonight. I'm going to backtrack, one, because we did do a update. In addition to Safe Schools Update, we approved the Safe Havens review of our twenty facilities to make sure that we are in good order and as safe as we can possibly be with our facilities, protecting all of our students, faculty, and staff. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nakin, for that report.
Mr. President, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee met on Monday, July the eighteenth. We had one item on our agenda. That was the revisions of the St. Charles Parish Schools two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three Student Code of Conduct District Handbook. That was approved earlier this evening, and I just want to highly encourage all parents to please review the handbook and the changes that were made. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Bernard. Any?
Mr. President, the Risk Management and Insurance Committee met on Monday night. We had our risk manager update us on our legal updates. Then we had some, two items. It was approval of liability insurance and approval of functions that was brought to the board table tonight and approved. We also approved the purchase of student accident, purchase of excess workers compensation insurance, and the purchase of faithful performance bond. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Okuan.
Mr. President, the Personnel and Policy Committee met on Monday night and discussed around six items. One of them is unusual that it came through my committee. It should have belonged to Mr. Nakans because it's physical plant services, but since it was a new position, we had to have, we had to figure that out, and we got the job description also. But the others were the Rodney Lefond, R. Lefond Performing Arts Center restructuring plan, the Rodney Lefond Performing Arts Center Job Description Additions and Revisions, revisions to policy for five point seven four, revisions to policy four point two three, and proposals, acceptance of substitute management services, and then personnel items. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Savoie.
Mr. President, the Legislative Committee met last Monday night and entered into some continuous discussion regarding the issue that was presented tonight regarding the lobbyists. I want to thank the board for your support on that and approving that item.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The Finance and Audit Committee also met on Monday, July eighteenth, and we covered six items. All six of those items came to the full board this evening, and those items were the Industrial Tax Exemption Application for Bungy North America Incorporated, Resolution to Approve the Milledge Rates for the Tax Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Two, Request for Proposals, Emergency Project Management, Resolution on Oversight Authorization of School Board Bank Accounts, Interim Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Budget, and Accounts Payable for the Month of June, two thousand and twenty-two. As you can see, we had, we covered quite a few items between our various committees on Monday evening, and I think all total we had thirty-two agenda items between the committees. It brings us to the item five point zero two, the Superintendent's Report, and I'll ask Dr. Orland to provide his report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, you know, kind of along the same lines of being long, I apologize to the intervenants for this report, but it is certainly necessary considering the beginning of the year is only a few weeks away. As of today, we have incurred a total of thirty-one million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars in Hurricane Ida recovery expenses. We are projecting future costs to be approximately seventeen point four million dollars, including fourteen point two million for large construction projects and one point four million for smaller projects. We've received twenty-six million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars in insurance payments thus far. The two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three school year is quickly approaching, and we are all excited as ever to welcome our students and families back from what I hope was a restful summer break. To ensure a smooth transition to the start of the new school year, we will once again conduct staggered starts for kindergarten through twelfth-grade students. Kindergarten through twelfth-grade students with a last name beginning with A through K will attend their first day of school on Monday, August eighth, and will remain home on Tuesday, August ninth. Kindergarten through twelfth-grade students with their last name beginning with L through Z will attend school on August ninth and remain home on August eighth. All kindergarten through twelfth-grade students will attend school daily, beginning on Wednesday, August tenth. Pre-kindergarten students will begin their staggered start on August sixteenth and seventeenth. Information relative to returning to school will also be sent by school administration. A back-to-school brochure is being mailed to all St. Charles Parish residents prior to school reopening. Please check your mailbox in the coming weeks for the brochure. Students will once again receive the inbox. The inbox contains important district and school documents for the year. I'd like to thank Shell Norco Manufacturing Complex for its continued support of funding for the inbox. Please be sure to review the information in the inbox and complete any back-to-school paperwork before the deadline. Please visit the district's website and school websites for important back-to-school information. Information is being updated regularly with important information for the start of the new school year. The Annual Youth Rally for St. Charles Parish Students and Parents will take place on Saturday, July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, from nine a.m. until twelve noon in the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center parking lot. The rally is being sponsored by St. Charles Parish Sheriff's Office, a safe place of St. Charles, blessed to be a blessing, United Way of St. Charles, and St. Charles Parish Public Schools. This year's event will be a drive-through school supply giveaway to the first six hundred St. Charles Parish residents. This is a great kickoff to the school year. Hope to see you there. Our Transportation Department has worked hard all summer implementing new software to improve efficiencies and communication to our families. Our biggest improvements are our parent app rolling out for the start of the school year, GPS with turn-by-turn directions on all buses, student scanning and tracking on all buses, and simplified online bus registration. The parent app will assist parents and, well, parent app will assist parents with bus pickup and drop-off times, as well as communicating bus changes. The GPS system will be preloaded with all bus routes and assist sub and cover operators with running routes correctly and timely. Student tracking will ensure all students are boarding the correct bus and exiting at the correct stop. Our online bus registration will speed up the time it takes to get students routed on buses. Finally, as we prepare for the start of another fantastic school year, please know the health and safety of our students and employees is and will continue to be a top priority. Our Safe Schools Program is robust and developed with the support and partnership of the St. Charles Parish Sheriff's Office, St. Charles Parish Emergency Operations Center, St. Charles Parish Hospital, and local first responders. It is continuously evaluated and improved and is currently being reviewed by nationally renowned, or will be renewed by nationally renowned, Safe Schools expert Michael Dorn from Safe Havens International, as approved by the board tonight. This is a process, ongoing process, to ensure protocols and practices in place are of the highest standard. Employees will take part in their yearly training of these protocols at the start of the school year. The school system has recently expanded our Safe Schools Program with safety modifications to school campuses, including single-point entries, safety vestibules, perimeter fencing, state-of-the-art camera systems linked to local law enforcement, and other modifications made possible through community-supported bond issues. School resource officers are located on our middle and high school campuses, and with tonight's passage will also serve our elementary schools and Head Start Centers. Each school has a Safe Schools team that facilitates training and conducts safety drills throughout the school year. This year, our entire school system, in partnership with many state and local agencies, will also participate in an active shooter drill, actually is a reunification drill, as conducted at one of our sites. The mental health and wellness of our students is also a top priority. In the past few years, our board has made significant investments and resources to support the social-emotional wellness needs of our students. We have implemented school-based social-emotional wellness teams at each school. Licensed mental health professionals as well as counselors play a critical role on these teams by providing wraparound support to students. We also conduct a universal screening to identify students experiencing trauma, anxiety, and other adverse circumstances, determine if additional student supports are needed, and then align internal and external resources as appropriate to address their needs. As a community, we will continue to work together to keep our schools safe and promote a culture where everyone's responsibility is to be vigilant and focused on safety. And then finally, finally, we were, we received notification today from the State Department of Education that we have two overall state winners. Dr. David Scheck Snyder, Principal of Harry Hurst Middle School, has been selected as a Louisiana State Overall Principal of the Year, which means he beat out every principal in that selection process. Also selected is our Teacher of the Year. Ms. Brittany Bonifons has been selected as the overall winner of the Louisiana State Teacher of the Year. She is currently a math teacher at Hornville High School. So congratulations to both of these individuals. That would be called a clean sweep of awards at these awards, which will be celebrated next weekend, next Saturday. That concludes my report, Mr. President. We are very confident that both will be represented at the national level, National Teacher and Principal of the Year, which will be their next level of competition.
Great news, tremendous accomplishment by both. Thank you, Dr. Orland, for that report. Motion adjourned? We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Nakin to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Nay. Stand adjourned. And happy birthday to Mr. Chris.